...of the Board of School Directors for March 21st, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let me introduce this is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. We've got a full house here tonight. Good to see you all out there. And Ms. Terry, would you please run the roll call?
Jessica Kennedy. Cindy Clark.
Here.
Me. Hi, Professor.
Here.
Ron Miller.
Here.
Egon Nessman.
Here.
Scott Hader.
Here.
Marcell Saffery. Susan Smith.
Here.
Thank you, Terry. We need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 20th, 2019.
I move we accept the minutes for the February 20th, 2019 meeting.
Can I second? It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the minutes for the regular meeting of February 20th, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Is there any public participation on the agenda items? There is none. Move right on. And we need a motion now to approve the bills for payment in the general fund for
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the bills for payment in the amount of $2,866,487.25. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. We need a motion for the financial report, the treasurer's report from February 2019, the budget recap from February 2019, and the student activities report from 2019.
So move approval.
Sir.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the financial reports for February 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And the motion carries. And is there any correspondence?
No correspondence.
No correspondence. Okay. I'd like to turn it over now to our superintendent for our superintendent's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Kretowski. My pleasure. We have our left district, Big Beaver Elementary here with us this evening to present a STEM presentation. And with them, I'm going to introduce, we have Mr. Chad Thomas, our Central Elementary Assistant Principal, Mr. Royland Pettis, our Assistant Principal of Big Beaver Elementary, Ms. Cherry is with us as well, she's our Coordinating Principal, and Sir Tyler Joden is our STEM educator, and he's going to be working with students on the curriculum. So if it's point time, I'll turn over the floor to Mr. Thomas as the introduction to the meetings.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Good evening.
At a couple of the school board meetings this year, we were able to listen to some of the things that the high school and the middle school were doing in their STEM programs, some of the interesting activities and programs that they have going. In the elementary, a couple of years ago, we started discussing, you know, the importance of career readiness and career exploration for younger students. So, we wanted to find a way to incorporate STEM into the elementary. So this year is the first official year that we have the program going. And how we're doing it is, we're sharing a STEM teacher and a librarian between the two buildings. So throughout the year, we switch quarterly, Big Beaver students and Central students will have an opportunity to have STEM for half a year and library for half a year. And our STEM teacher is Mr. Joden, previously a math teacher down here at Central. And we have students from both Big Beaver and Central down here to talk tonight about some of the things that they are doing. So I'm going to give the floor over to Mr. Joden. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
STEM has been a huge learning process, not just for all my wonderful children, but for me as well. It's growing pains and just learning every day as I go. A couple just different things at the K-2 level, we have, I've really been preaching with my students a growth mindset. And the growth mindset just kind of shows them that the failure is okay, and that we always talk about our brains get a lot stronger every time we make that mistake because then they think about, well, no, I gotta do it this way. So throughout this year, we've been experiencing with like different building scenarios, using marble runs, using archi planks that we purchased through our state money, and it has gone through the roof. And the kids are always excited when they come to second class because they're always asking, well, what are we doing today? At the 3-5 level, it has given me a chance to really hone in on some different projects with my students and do specific kind of projects to where we're building a bridge or we're talking about different types of bridges that can be built. And bounce back, just some K-2 pictures. Go back one more, Robby. Some K-2 pictures that I've added on. One more forward. Sorry. We had, this was, your, one of our favorite challenges that our students worked on was, we had a well rescue where they lost their teddy bear down into a well, and they had to build a device, and I would not, I would, no hints from Mr. Joden. And they had to kind of come up with a device. So you saw the idea of fishing rods where they thought that a plastic teddy bear would just jump onto a line, to the point where they created like a lasso system. So it was really cool just to see the variations of ideas that the students would come up with.
Right.
On the right-hand side, our students, we started jumping into a little bit of a technology route where we worked with hex bugs, and it's kind of like a robotic cockroach, to put it in easier terms. It was a lot of fun because we worked on building a maze and we talked about a controlled substance within a science experiment. And then our second graders, at the end of our lesson, we agreed on racing our hex bugs to see, we had different colored hex bugs, so we wanted to see which ones were the fastest. So we talked about building our track, and it was, that in itself was a learning process. At our 3-5 level, we have, I've given them a lot more of the STEM challenges that we've seen online, and just to kind of really get them excited and working together in a collaborative environment to just come together and put ideas together and work through those struggles, whether it's building a bridge out of popsicle sticks. We focused on building suspension bridges for that unit. We had bridge building kits to where they had to bridge a gap and then put weight on their bridge to see if it would withhold it. We used newspaper challenges, the whole different ways, and we also talked about corbeled arch bridges, and they had to fit different sized objects through their arch. So it's, it was a lot of fun watching all of that. On the next slide, we, our fifth graders, we kind of jumped into a laser pointer focus where we, we know in fourth grade they study about circuits. So we wanted to dive a little deeper into learning about lasers and how they're used in the industries. And it was a lot of fun. We built an LED circuit, and they had to use resistors, so we talked about how resistors work within a circuit. And then their challenge was, they had to reflect their laser light in a pattern to put a photo resistor on their circuit to make their light shine a little bit brighter. And that was a challenge in itself. I had a student that, I started out with four mirrors, and I assumed they got up to six mirrors reflecting all in a pattern to his circuit. My fifth graders at Big Beaver, we dove into 3D design and 3D printing to where they all, all, every fifth grader got to design their own keychain to hook onto their bookbag, and it was fully personalized and then we printed all out. So this is just a little preview of kind of what they look like, so. Now, we have been in our technology focus, and we really dove into coding. In my time at Big Beaver, we were able to purchase Spiro robots, and it was a huge learning curve for myself because I've never used one. So I wanted to learn with my students as we did this. So we, I kind of just opened them up to a program and said, let's have fun, and let's build a couple of different programs. So I have my Big Beaver students, they're going to show you two different programs that they've made. And then, at my time at Central now, we've been working on the code.org website, and they have been coding a dance party. So we always love music, and our students love music, so it makes it a little bit better coding to kind of throw in a little dance party with it. So I want to turn it over to my girls Ava and Ava Turner. And they're going to talk a little bit about their dance party, what they made.
Hi. I'm Alaya, and today I'm here to talk about what we have been doing in STEM lately. Right now, we are working on coding a dance party on the code.org site. What I really like about the program is that it features a variety of different songs. We learned more of what Ms. Maya taught us last year. Thank you, Ms. Maya.
Hi. I'm Erica. I'm here to explain a little bit about what we're going to do. We were able to use different backgrounds and select the most of characters that we had specifically. We were also able to select some different. I really like the program too because we were able to burn how we're going to burn. On the hand, I will show you our.
If you just hit run on my screen. So this is one of the. You can hit reset. And then, we'll show you Ava's. So they were able, their final project was to just kind of have fun, and they learned the different code aspects, and now create your own. So on the next tab, on top.
Two?
No, just the other tab. I'm got it. You got it. So as you can see, they put different background settings, and they actually, they were able to control their characters, they were able to different formations, and their dances that they were able to do, so.
So they programmed those videos to do that whole thing. They did the programming.
They did it all. And it was, it was, so it started on the first lesson where it kind of just eased into how to add a dancer. And then it would add after a certain couple of beats that they would have to have their dancer do a different dance. So it just kind of built and progressed them through the whole dance scenario. It was. And next up are my Big Beaver students. We're going to start with Rachel Sladzynaski and Blaine Mase. They're going to talk about their first program that we worked on together. Do you want me to hold your computer as you go? All right, picture.
Hello, my name is Rachel Sladzynaski. I'm a student at Big Beaver Elementary. As you may know, this year, Mr. Joden has taught us STEM. STEM is like engineering and fancy. We make, create, and celebrate when we finish our goals. Well, this is good students got picked to present to you some things about STEM. Mainly, we've been working with Spiros, and high schools really enjoy them. I created a program with Spiro EDU. This is the program that connects the Spiro to the children.
So you can aim it at, aim it at yourself. So her robot is called Da Bomb. And every 90-degree turn that it makes, it, it has a boom sound with it. She's programmed it.
So, finally, I am still in the trial and error stage of my program. This is my latest STEM project, the star. The star has two main blocks.
So Blaine's my wild card. Our program was to program a square using 90-degree turns, but Blaine said, I want to do a star. I said, let's have at it. So it took a lot of talking about the angles and degrees in which our robot needed to turn. And Blaine and I sat last week, or earlier this week, and kind of worked it out. Yeah. It was proud air. All right, next up are two lovely girls, Shailen Clark and Kamia Turner. Our second program that we worked on was, they coded a toss game with their Spiro. When they heard that we were going to throw these in the classroom, they were really nervous because my first word that came out of my mouth was, these are very expensive to throw. I said, why not? They're adorable, so.
Go ahead, girl.
Hello. Can I introduce you to me, please? I'm the toss game.
My name is Shailen.
And I'm Kamia.
So the way this game works is, you gotta toss the Spiro to your partner. And you, as you can see over there, the main LED, you can use two specific colors, red and green. The green LED stands for the Spiro being thrown over three Gs. And the red one stands for?
Um, being thrown under three Gs.
And the G stands for?
Um, just for the calories.
Let it, let it stay first.
Play the toss game. And there's actually animal noises to make it funner, so when you throw the ball to your partner, they can either guess the noise or make you guess it.
So we're looking forward to next year. We have our, we have a new curriculum coming towards the STEM community from K-12, so we're very excited to see what that all brings out.
I'd like to thank you students for coming here tonight and presenting and sharing with the board all about your experiences in the STEM program this year. It was you, and I knew it was pretty exciting for you, so it makes it worthwhile to share with the board members to see what they've been back there with all of you. So thank you, and thank you, parents and family and friends for your support throughout the year, but thank you for coming tonight and supporting your children, and then we're glad that you were able to join us tonight. I know that it's a busy time of year, so if you do need to leave, okay, appreciate you coming out and spending some time with us this year. Thank you. While we're transitioning, we do have a video presentation coming up. Is this a mouse? Is it back there somewhere?
I can get through it, Dr. Nish. I can make it.
You can.
Yeah, welcome, everybody. Got quite the crowd here tonight. This is a middle school video. We follow the elementary schools just like we do in the school chain, you know? We're never as cute, never as fancy and adored, but we try our best. Kids get through middle school, and they go to the high school, and they go on to do great things. This is just part of the whole package that the kids will be doing. This is a program called What's So Cool About Manufacturing? Did you know with the career and work standards that are out there as part of the curriculum for all the students that, you know, they'll be working on things? I'll show them what's out there as far as a job goes. I remember when we were in school, you either did the job your parents did, or you found something, you got lucky and found something you liked, like education, and you took off with that in college. These kids have so much exposure, and this is totally awesome. This was done by Mr. Yano and Mr. Brown. Got hooked up with this. They hooked up with McDannels down here in Deer Falls, a couple of blocks away. McDannell Ceramics, it used to be, what was it before McDannell, Factory, wasn't it, back in the day?
Yeah.
So they're diversified. It's, it's really cool, uh, cool plant. They do a lot of things to deal with, flather businesses, glass and plastic and things like that, and they'll talk about that in the video. And this is sponsored, but the program was sponsored by the Pittsburgh area company called Catalyst Connection, sponsored this contest. Their goal, this Catalyst Connection, is they do website design, grant writing, workforce development, labor recruitment for small businesses and mid-sized companies. And they put this contest out, they have all the standards, and the kids went through, and they made this video. You could, please vote for us because there's a contest. What we win, I'm not sure, but our video is the best, if not first place, it's definitely tied for first. There's like six or eight other school districts.
The link's on our Facebook page, so check it out.
Yep, so please vote. Please, Mr. Bob.
Beaver Falls Middle School goes to McDannell Ceramics.
We explore McDannell Ceramics, who specialize in ceramic pipes and tubes. These products help a lot of different industries.
Some of our main industries are for furnaces, like heat treating. We sell thermocouple tubes that can measure the temperature of things. Some of our big customers we go to are places like Corning, which make your TV screens and your mobile phone screens. We also sell to industries that make things like card components. Pretty much everything you've ever had has some sort of ceramic in the process to make it.
So how do they make these products? Two ways are called the extrusion and cast process.
So the extrusion process is a process of metal being returned to McDannell, where you take a classified case of ceramic powder and push it through that. Very similar to a paper on that, where you just have to take a, it's.
Yeah, I mean, the extrusion process is used in different kinds of industry. The chocolate bar that you buy at the store, that's extruded. So that's all extruded chocolate, just like this tube here.
So there's casting, we use, we pick the plastic mold that we made, we have a cast molding process, we'll pick one of those molds, and we add the four and we put it in this, and it's pretty different where you make the powder, it's suspended in a lot of water, and you put this into the mold. This mold will actually draw the water from the powder, and this will actually make these layers and layers of along, or whatever the breaking is, right here, you know, it's probably true.
For slipcasting, you also use the same thing in the toilet industry. So that toilet that you use every single morning with slip cast, just like those big tubes you see.
And finally, we ask them, what's so cool about their jobs in manufacturing?
Really cool about manufacturing is the fact is you can see what you're thinking in real time. You can spot something that's theoretical, or something that's, you know, you're sitting on a blackboard, there's something physical, you type all the information you need, and you see in real time, right, you type it in.
I love dealing with customers. I love talking to people. There are so many times where a customer will call and they have a problem. So I'll talk them through it, I'll understand what they're doing, what they're trying to do, and I'll find out how I can help. And being able to see how a customer uses our product to accomplish a task, it makes me feel like, you know, I did a good thing today.
Thanks for joining us. This is Big Sporting, Al Ceramics.
All right, so that's it. There's lots of opportunities for the students, so hopefully they'll take advantage of it. That was all done by the kids. Other schools, I know the adults did it, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Appreciate it.
Next, Mr. Kretowski. We have a few guests here from Beaver Falls, Carnegie. I very, very glad to introduce them.
Yes, and I'd like to, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Kretowski. Ray, would you stand, please, and just want to introduce you to the Beaver Falls School Board. Mr. Ray is the new president. Well, you've been the president for how long now, George?
For two years.
For two years. Okay. Ray's going to introduce and then say a few words about what's going on in the library these days, and he'll introduce the other folks he has with him, especially in particular, our new librarian, new librarian at Beaver Falls.
Yeah, so first is Rachel Christie, who's our new librarian. She's been with us since January.
Nice, Rachel.
Director.
December. No, December. The next was December.
December, okay. Track of time.
We're having fun, so.
Yeah, yeah. And Matt Dawson, our treasurer. And his wife, Kelvin. I was also prompted to be rude, so I will. I wanted to thank all the members of the school board, you know, the president and the past, for the many years of sponsorship and financial assistance. And with the planned improvements to downtown Beaver Falls, we also hope to both preserve and maintain the building for many years to come. We are not financially well off by any means, but we hope to pursue grants and other revenues to maintain the library. In keeping with that, our bylaws have always stipulated that a member of the school board also occupy a seat on the, our Board of Trustees, and we would like to see that continue as we share the common goal of education and enlightenment for our youth, and also the adults of the district. In that way, we can keep you informed and hopefully deserve your financial assistance in the future, especially with the children's programs, both current and those that are planned. So our library director, Rachel, will update you on our creative children's programs.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you, board. Yeah, do we want to clap for it?
Then Rachel, I just want to add that Rachel's doing a wonderful job. Rachel, you replaced Mrs.
Barsadi.
Barsadi, who was our librarian in Beaver Falls for how many years?
Seventeen.
Seventeen years she was there, so most of you knew Mrs. Barsadi, and I just got to tell you, Rachel's young, really wanted the job when we interviewed probably four people that we had interviewed for the position, and she's doing a wonderful job. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. Thank you for taking the time to hear from us tonight. As Ray has already briefed you on, there are a lot of things that are going on at our library and a lot of new things in my coming in and revising and streamlining a lot of things, and I've been redoing the job descriptions that are currently there. So we're just trying to see how my, our staff can build a better area, or house for the children to come in. And so I want to just list a few things. Summer learning programs during the summer months are offered for our children and teens for the community. And our summer kickoff this year is May 18th, and that is also a kickoff for our new layout of the library that I'm also doing during this very hectic spring. So I encourage you to come in and see the layout of the library, and then also see what we are offering the children during the months that they are not in school. I know there is a proven decline during the summer months, so we have really tried to, in the past, focus a lot of time and energy to our summer programs, and that is not going to change with me. In fact, I want to offer more, and I will get into that. We also are a part of a year-on partnership with Trails Ministries, which also impacts the students that are in your schools. And we are the only library in Beaver County that offers an after-school program, which is Sundays. And we, Christine Kroger is the children's librarian at the Carnegie Free Library, and she has worked with Ty Joden and built a phenomenal relationship that I actually am just now getting introduced to. So seeing the Spiros tonight, we have them in the library. I've never seen them before, so that was fun. I never get a chance to go upstairs during their after-school program, so that was really cool to see and see how engaged that the children were. So we do ready workshops, make our Mondays, Ty is a part of, so just that partnership I love, just because we are all working toward a common goal for our children and teens and young adults in our community. Christine has also done programs with pre-K and elementary students for the last three years, and like I said, Ty is also a part of. three years, um, and like I said, Ty is also a part of those as well. Um, and so, like Ray has, um, alluded to with the building, we are trying to get in a position where we can apply for grants and, um, make kind of repair and maintain the building. Um, there's been a lot of decay, and, um, the maintenance hasn't been as good as it should have been, so I'm really focused on preserving our building, because without the building, we don't have a library, and we don't have somewhere for our kids and the community to come into. Um, so that is my, probably my number-one job, and I didn't think that would be my number-one job as librarian, but it's been, um, a learning experience for me, and I'm very passionate about it, um, so it's exciting. Um, but also, one of our biggest announcements is for the summer programming, which is when it's going to launch, um, but it, in years to come, it's a year-to-year, um, sponsorship. PNC has funded us to be a part of Inquire Within, uh, which is a WQED PBS Kids-based, um, resource outlet. So our summer kickoff this year is going to showcase that, all that we have to offer now through PBS Kids and WQED. So our signage is gonna look different, our resources are totally, um, you know, vetted, and we don't have to worry about what, you know, the children are being provided, because a lot of research goes into that. What we want to share with the kids, what we do with the kids, um, we have to make sure that it's appropriate. So knowing that we have this resource through PBS Kids where it's already vetted, kind of alleviates time, and, um, we're just very excited. Um, it hasn't been officially announced yet, April is our start, um, but like I said, our summer kickoff on May 18th is when we will be totally showcasing this new journey that we're going into with WQED and PBS Kids, and so I encourage everyone to look out for that. Um, our new logo is up on our Facebook page through the Inquire Within, um, uh, partnership, so I am just really excited about the resources that we're going to receive through this program, that we can offer with every program that we do in the library. It's just gonna be in addition to what we do, and I think it's a very solid and, um, exciting thing that I could see. So, um, I thank you for your time, and thank you for my support here with me, Ray, and Matt. And again, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the agenda items for this evening. Under personnel, Ms. Bridget Lindsay requesting a family and medical leave of absence beginning April 23rd through June 12th, 2019.
I move we approve the reading of absence for Ms. Bridget Lindsay.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we grant the request for a family and medical leave of absence beginning April 23rd, 2019 through June 12th, 2019 for Ms. Bridget Lindsay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Mrs. Becca Grassel requesting an unpaid leave of absence beginning approximately March 25th through June 12th, 2019.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we grant to Ms. Becca Grassel an unpaid leave of absence beginning approximately March 25th, 2019 through June 12th, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Ms. Ruth Bell is requesting an unpaid leave of day on Wednesday, March 20th, 2019.
So move approval.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we grant Ms. Ruth Bell a, an unpaid, an unpaid leave day on Wednesday, March 20th, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Ms. Patricia Harris is requesting an unpaid leave of absence beginning February 22nd through March 11th, 2019.
So move approval.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we grant an unpaid leave of absence beginning February 22nd, 2019 through March 11th for Ms. Patricia Harris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Mr. Johnny Hicks has submitted his letter of intent to retire from the Dean of Students position at the middle school effective June 12th, 2019. Mr. Hicks has been with us for forty-five years of service, and we want to send greatly wishing him the best.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we reluctantly approve the letter of intent to retire from the Dean of Students position at the middle school for Mr. Donnie Hicks effective June 12th, 2019, with forty-five years of service to this school district. Is that allowed to say reluctantly? We hate to see Mr. Hicks. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. It is a sad day when we lose an employee like Mr. Donnie Hicks. An honorable man has practically given his life here for this school district. We certainly appreciate his efforts and everything he has done. Good job, Mr. Hicks. Okay, I'm done.
Mr. Matt Lavery has submitted his resignation as the seventh and eighth grade baseball coach effective immediately.
It's been properly seconded, properly moved and seconded, that we approve the resignation of Mr. Matt Lavery as the seventh and eighth grade baseball coach effective immediately. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Yes, Athletic Committee recommends appointing Mr. Joseph Kittner at the seventh and eighth grade assistant basketball coach effective the 2018-19 school year at a salary of eleven hundred dollars.
Did you say basketball?
Yeah, you did.
Did I say basketball? I'm sorry. Baseball, basketball's over, sorry.
So move approval.
Been properly moved and seconded that we appoint Mr. Joe Kittner as the seventh and eighth grade assistant baseball coach effective 2018-19 school year at a salary of one thousand one hundred dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
The Athletic Committee also recommends appointing Mr. Gerald, excuse me, Mr. Jerry Bukavon as a volunteer varsity baseball coach effective the 2018-19 school year.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the hiring of Mr. Gerald Bukavon, uh, as a volunteer varsity baseball coach effective 2018-19 school year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
The Athletic Committee recommends appointing Mr. Justin Sabona as the volunteer girls varsity softball coach effective the 2018-19 school year.
So move approval.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve appointing Mr. Justin Sabona as a volunteer girls varsity softball coach effective for the eighteen, 2018-2019 school year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
The Athletic Director recommends adjusting Ryan Beany's softball coach salary from one thousand dollars to eleven hundred dollars.
So move approval.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the adjustment of Ryan Beany's softball coaching salary from one thousand to one thousand one hundred dollars effective immediately. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Administration recommends approval of the additions to the 2018-19 bus van driver list provided by McCarter Transport.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the additions to the 2018-2019 bus van driver list provided by McCarter Transport. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Administration recommends adding Amir Anderson to the custodial substitute list at a rate of ten dollars per hour without benefits.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we add Amir Anderson to the custodial substitute list at a rate of ten dollars per hour without benefits. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
This next one might take a little while. We have several field trips, uh, that are being recommended for approval this evening. Mrs. Farina, Mrs. Beagle, Mrs. Peppin, Mrs. Grassel are requesting permission to take their fourth grade classes to the National Avery in Pittsburgh on Friday, May 17th, 2019. Mrs. Rebecca Connington is requesting permission to take four to six high school students to Penn State Beaver Friday, April 5th to attend the Science Challenge, where students will compete for scholarships in biology, chemistry, and physics. Mr. Steve Beck is requesting permission to take approximately twenty-five students to the Ohio Valley College of Technology in East Liverpool, Ohio, Thursday, April 11th, to visit the campus and meet with a college advisor. Mr. Steve Beck is also requesting permission to take five to seven students to Old Vision and Swickley on Thursday, April 4th, to explore career opportunities in a warehouse setting. Mr. Steve Beck, Mr. Chris Ludwig, and Mr. Tim Lilla are requesting permission to take forty high school students to the David Lawrence Convention Center, Pittsburgh, PA, Friday, March 29th, and thus to attend the build-on careers in the construction and allied industry event. Mrs. Allison Waldo is requesting permission to take fifteen girls in the seventh grade to Penn State Beaver Friday, May 10th, to attend the Wise Up STEM Program. Mr. Jonathan Sheffield and Mrs. Michelle Benn are requesting permission to take fifteen students in the gifted program to the Omni-Sale and Cranberry Township on Friday, April 12th, to tour the facility and see robotics at work in a real-world setting. Mr. Jonathan Sheffield and Mrs. Michelle Benn are requesting permission to take seven students in the gifted program to Wyndham Orlando Resort in Orlando, Florida, April 24th through April 30th, 2019, in order for them to participate in the Agola National Tournament. Mrs. Leslie Dossett and Mr. Steve Beck are requesting permission to take six high school students to the Carrying Place in Lexford, PA, on Tuesday, April 30th, to attend the Group Awareness Day. Central Elementary first grade teachers are requesting permission to take their classes to the Pittsburgh Zoo Friday, May 10th. Central Elementary third grade teachers are requesting permission to take their classes to Rain State Park in Porinville, PA, Tuesday, May 28th, to take part in environmental activities. Mrs. Tammy Kerriger is requesting permission to take four middle school students to Community College in Beaver County on Friday, May 3rd, to attend the Beaver County Transition Fair. And Mrs. Cindy Callen is requesting permission to take approximately forty students to the University of Pittsburgh, Heinz Chapel, and Mallorca Restaurant, Thursday, April 25th, to tour the nationality rooms, chapel, and have lunch at the Spanish restaurant.
So move approval.
A second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the field trip requests as read by Dr. Nugent, letters A through M. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Administration recommends approval of the 2019-2020 school calendar.
So move approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the 2019-2020 school calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Administration recommends adoption of the Beaver Valley Intermediate Unit 2019-2020 general operating budget in the amount of one million, four hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars. This will be without any increase to this school district.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we recommend adoption of the Beaver Valley Intermediate Unit 2019-2020 general operating budget in the amount of one million, four hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars, with no increase to our school district. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Board of School Directors recommends approving change order number two from Garland VBS Inc. in the amount of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars to the existing corporate building group.
So move approval.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we approve the change order number two from Garland VBS Incorporated in the amount of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars to repair the existing corporate building group. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. That will run through tarps on the roof, is that correct? There we go. Thank you, Dr. Nugent. We appreciate that. And, uh, at this time, uh, is there anything from our solicitor?
Yeah, I just wanted to announce to the public this evening that there will be an executive session held, uh, before the board, um, immediately following this meeting to discuss a personnel item. And, um, just for the students that are here, um, to let you know what that means, um, generally under, the general rule of law of the open meetings law, or what they call sunshine laws, to let the sunshine in, says that school board meetings are open to the public. There are certain exceptions to, to the rule of law, and personnel, contract labor negotiations, and student issues are items that have a confidential nature to them, so that the school board, um, discusses those in public. So when you all leave, that's what the board will do, they'll have another meeting telling them to discuss a personnel issue.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Nothing else? Got it. Very good. And, uh, at this time, we have our student board members report, but I believe, Mr.
Jen is at a overnight, at Lehigh University, so, Mr. Bob, and I went to the bullpen.
All right. Dante Collins was the February Student of the Month, and Marissa Santillo is the March Student of the Month for the Rotary Club. In February, Tyler Broke and Alyssa Mayly were awarded Lions Club Students of the Month Honors, and E. Marion Mosley and Ava Kuncelman are current recipients of the Lions Club Students of the Month Honors for the month of March. Annalay Wittrick auditioned for inmate honors band. Tammy Lutz, Annalay Wittrick, and Elena Block represented us at district band. Senior Gabby Minto placed tenth in the fifty freestyle and ninth in the hunter freestyle at WPI, uh, WPIAL swimming. Our unified bocce team had a great playoff run and narrowly missed going to Hershey for the States. Our boys bowling team placed eleventh in the WPIBL Bowling Finals. Mr. Sososmo reports that Damon Cleveland, Tommy Lutz, Annalay Wittrick, Julia Cole, Elena Block, Ben Ladder, and Caleb Haas attended the Pittsburgh Symphony Here and Now Project. The musical will be held on March 29th, 30th, and 31st. Musical this year is Guys and Dolls. The director reported that students are putting the finishing touches and are excited for the opening. Last night, seventeen of our top students were inducted into the BFHS NHS. Just a side note, our NHS chart was chartered in 1930. Pretty impressive. Spring sports are starting. Please try to make it to baseball or a softball game, a track meet or a voice tennis match.
Thank you, Mr. Bob. Before we ask for other new business, I don't know that there will be any, but I'm just curious as to you students, where, what are you doing here?
We're here for Mr. Parkus's assignment.
Mr. Parkus's assignment.
We're here again.
There we go. Nice. How many, how many students are here from the high school, from Mr. Parkus's class? Very nice. Good to have you here. Thank you for coming, get to see how a school board operates, and, uh, we appreciate you coming, and we appreciate the work that you do in our school. We wish you well. Nice job. Good job. And, uh, any other new business before the board? No new business? Any old business? No old business? Any public participation? Yes?
My name's Liz Pegley.
Address?
407 Fortieth Street. As I had previous mentioned in a school board meeting, uh, I think a month ago, I left off item two for the next meeting, so I'm here to, um, dust off a little bit more, as I mentioned last month, um, in another item. But before I go into that, I just want to let you all know, I'm speaking on behalf of myself. Uh, those in attendance are not aware of anything I'm about to mention or have a part of what I'm saying, so please keep that in mind for me. A few years ago, I've asked to meet with people and discuss some things that I think are very concerning. I have not had a response back from some of those, so I went to another avenue, got a response, and the response was, um, I need to come to the school board, because that's who makes the decisions. So I checked with an outside, uh, person, and as well, they have advised me to come here. So if I'm out, not, can't speak, I know you'll tell me, but, um, I've researched, and I believe I'm allowed to say. I asked that you do a con-
Can I interrupt and just have our-
I just want to hear what she has to say.
I know, but she's gonna say something about personnel.
No, no, I know I'm not allowed to say anything about personnel.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Nope, I've been here before, you know I'm professional. I would never do that. Let me see where I was at. Oh, here it is. Um, I'm just asking all of you if you will do a contract study without going into anything Without going into anything else, I'm just going to ask for you for three contracts. Will you please, please, do what I'll call a contract study? And especially look at a top step for the last seven years. Then review other steps as how to a percentage was allocated. Specifically when it comes to a step 18 and above. I won't read the rest because I'm not sure that I should do that. So I'm going to ask you to please continue to research the items in this district. I know last year I came and asked you to help us. And we still need, I still need, scratch off, wait. I and our students here still need you as a school board to help us. Please. As educators and as teachers here, we're doing the best we can with what resources we have. So that's it. But I'd like to say on behalf of, if I'm allowed, now I got another third thing. Because Mr. Joden presented, wow. But what I'd like to say, that was awesome. Those kids were great. Like really, I'm not tech savvy at all and my, everybody in the district, Rodney laughs at me. But seriously, would you think about and look into? We have the Beaver Falls librarian here. Wonderful, I love what they said. Can we look at getting a full-time librarian back to Big Beaver and a full-time STEM teacher at Big Beaver? And not have to share those people? And make it a quality STEM and library program to help our kids? To give them the best at being STEM and doing that and reading and all of the things that our Beaver Falls librarian has mentioned? We can tie in with that. But we need those resources to do it and make it quality. We do the best that we can. But please, please, help us to give our students the best thing we can. We need a full-time librarian at Big Beaver again. We need a full-time STEM teacher. We need to keep our kids moving. These kids, I wish you could see how excited they are when they see Ty Joden. I know, I probably shouldn't have said that name. Sorry, I'm not allowed to say that. Right?
That's a lot of it.
Okay. I'm serious. And when, but it is. You have to come in and see this stuff. They need it. So just because of one of the wonderful things we just saw tonight, I wanted to touch upon that because it's awesome. And we need to continue moving it forward, not stay stagnant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public participation? Yes, sir?
Dan Swanson.
We need your address, Mr. Swanson.
428 McKinley Road.
Are you Beaver Falls?
Beaver Falls.
Okay. You're in the district?
I'm in the, yes.
Okay. Because I know there's two sides of McKinley, so I'm just checking.
Okay.
Go ahead, sorry.
I am coming today to talk about field trips and it was wonderful to hear everything, all the field trips that were approved tonight, which, that surprised me how many there are. I think it's very important that the field trips continue and sometimes it's very important, sometimes it's the only time kids get out. Bus rides, the Carnegie Science Center, all the things, the trips that the elementary school is doing this year. I brought this up to the PTO meeting this past week and I brought it up to the administrator there and I thought it was important to also come to the school board with this concern, is the busing system for the field trips. So my understanding is the kids do almost all, if not all of the fundraising for the field trips and the PTO funds the busing. My understanding is that McCarter's basically gives us a timeline that we have to be back by a certain time around 2:15, from the elementary school. I don't know about the middle and high school, if that's different or not, but from the elementary school position, they have to be back by 2:15, between 2:15 and 2:30 for whatever reasons. My concern is we're taking a lot of money that the kids are raising, the PTO is giving, and they're missing out on a lot of different things. They're spending less, more than an hour to two hours that they could be providing more stuff down at their field trips, but we have to get that back at a certain time. And it's not fair for us to say, McCarter's, we're going to, we're going to give you guys money to take us down and back, but they're saying you have to get back by a certain time. I just don't think it's fair to the kids. I don't think it's fair to the PTO. Again, I really, I agree that if there's a reason that it might, yeah.
Being an old-school bus driver, I do know that the reason we always had to be back was because McCarter's was always shorthanded on bus drivers and you had to be back to pick up the high school. Back then, we had high school, middle school, and elementary. So I do know that was the reason, you know.
But if that's the case, if they can't provide the service that we're asking, then either they can provide it with alternative bus drivers or is there a possibility that you can look elsewhere to provide transportation to and from the field trips? I'm just saying, these kids are, they're doing a lot of this. I mean, it's like throwing money out the window if they can't spend their entire day. They get back at 2:00 in the afternoon, they're sitting in the classroom, wasting away valuable time that they could be... I went on a field trip down in Pittsburgh a couple of weeks ago with third grade. It was rushed. You had to rush, they couldn't see a lot of things. They couldn't, because we had to get back on the bus by 1:30.
It's my understanding that every bus company in the area is facing the same situation and it has to deal with the Shell plant, believe it or not. They've siphoned off so many bus drivers, this is what I've been told, to drive the buses for Shell because the employees who work at the plant park in various areas around Beaver County and the buses bust the workers to and fro and they pay the bus company for the, for the Shell plant. The pay is good and we've lost a lot of school bus drivers. So there's a lack of school bus drivers countywide. I think no matter what community or what bus company we go to, in all likelihood, we're going to face the same situation. There, there's just a, there's just a shortage of bus drivers. And perhaps all the buses just need to get back so as to start making the bus runs. But I, we, we hear you. It's, it's, it's a problem. There's no doubt about it. It'd be great if we could have, have an extended stay down there, but sometimes we find McCarter Transit to be extremely cooperative with us in providing the best situation that we can have. Is that not right? Isn't that pretty fair to say?
Yeah, it happens, but if there are specific concerns, then with the teacher and a trip or something, that they should share that with the building administrator so we can look into it. I do know there's constraints as far as times because of bus driver sharing runs with elementary, middle school, and high school. But, you know, we also want our kids to have a workshop trip too. So if there was an opportunity where they've had an extra driver or something where they could have a longer period of time, we'd certainly look into that.
I mean, does that happen at the middle school and high school level? Like there are some field trips, I'm assuming that they leave even before school starts and they get back after school ends?
Yes.
And they're-
That's the time constraints sometimes.
And then they're, but they're able to provide the bus service for that?
Ms. Lena, do you have field trips that leave before school?
No. Unless it, well, the New York trip, but they don't typically come back. That's on a chartered bus. But as far as school bus trips, they typically have to be back by dismissal, which is 2:35. So the kids get their ride home and the buses can do their run. So most like trips to Pittsburgh, whether it's to the one in Oakland or wherever, if it's a school bus trip, you know, they're back by dismissal.
Because the other concern we have is if you don't get them back by dismissal time, sometimes kids don't get rides. You know, it's hard for parents or somebody to pick them up too, so we have to be cognizant of that as well.
But from the high school perspective, they're able to leave earlier too. Like your start time is earlier, correct?
Yeah. And typically the buses, when we have a field trip, they go, they leave about 8:30 or like well into second period. Yeah. Because we have an early shift.
We hear you and we'll, we'll try to work with the, try to work with the bus company in seeing, you know. It's tough though. I used to take children myself to the, to Pittsburgh and the return trip sometimes is a interesting trip because that bus driver knows they've got to get that bus back so as to make their runs. And it makes it difficult. Pittsburgh's hard.
Well, it becomes a specialty thing to-
If you go up to Oakland, you get to Oakland, that's, that's a little bit further than going right to the downtown.
I do want to add, in, we've had classes go to a theater performance, say at Heinz Hall or the Bennett. And they make the arrangements far enough in the head with McCarter saying, we will not be done, the performance won't be done. And they can't get up and leave due to etiquette that they do. And there are some buses that do, it's happened like twice a year, but come back at four. So, but they have to make that special. They have to make sure they have enough buses for the elementary running.
Now, do they, again, from my understanding is if they're, if we're back later than a certain time, they charge extra, extras?
That I can't speak to.
Basically, they charge you for the bus depending on where you're going, the mileage, basically is your initial charge. Then you usually get the bus for five hours. I think after five hours, it's usually a $16.50 an hour fee on top of the five hours.
Because I'm just saying, from, I understand the whole McCarter's issue, but from a money perspective, if we need, if we could be out there for an extra hour, getting that five, five, five and a half hour trip in, I'm sure that the funds could be there to pay for that.
If we have some extended trips, if we could notify them ahead of time, we could ask for an extra driver or, you know, try to make some arrangements.
But just the typical, I'm just looking at the typical.
Yeah.
And it's unfortunate, like the, you know, Camp Quantico, I don't, I don't know today, but it happened today. I'm sure they could have spent a lot more time there. So that's just my concern. So thanks for listening.
Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it. Is there anything else, public participation? Yes, sir?
Yeah, my name's Josh Maddox. I live at 471, I'm sorry, yeah, 4711 Fifth Avenue.
I didn't get your last name.
Maddox. M-A-T-T-O-C-K-S.
Okay.
I am the vice chairman of the Beaver Falls Rec Board. We were told that the school was looking to sell the softball fields at 37th Street to the city. We are wondering-
Whether that is true or not true, any sale of real estate by a school is not something that would be discussed in a public meeting?
Wait, I'm, it's not, that's kind of not where I'm going. That's what we heard, but then we also heard that it wasn't true. And we're just trying to understand from a rec board perspective, who's responsible for the fields? And is there any way that we can get any help from the city, the school board, or whatever, on maintenance and stuff for the field? I know one of the members on our board has submitted for a grant to get stuff done at the field and it was approved by the school board. So we're just kind of trying to understand what exactly is going on. Because in the past, we were told that the city owned it, then we were told that, no, the school board controls it, or I'm sorry, school. So from a rec board's perspective, we're just trying to understand what exactly is going on? And if we have ideas or whatever for the field, is it something that we can do? Do we need to come to the school board?
The district leases the fields to the city and they did, and I don't know about sales, but right now we, how we get them, they are responsible for the upkeep of the fields. They did submit for a grant to do some improvements on the fields or dugouts and such. So they are responsible for the upkeep. So I would say that they're the entity that you need to go to as far as the maintenance and upkeep of the fields, if that's-
Okay, because I know the city cuts the grass, but I know the city does not do anything to the field itself for being playable. That is actually my responsibility because I am also the director for softball. I get absolutely no help from the city on upkeep except for them cutting the grass, which is greatly appreciated because I work eight hours a day, Monday through Friday, so I don't have time to do all that. But we're all volunteers. We don't have the time to get down there and do some of this stuff. I mean, it would just be nice if we could maybe get a little bit more help. I mean, if the city is responsible for that, you know, maybe we need, maybe if we can see if the city can actually start actually maintaining the field itself. So then all we have to do whenever it's game time or practice, go down and get the chalk put on it, get the bases out, or whatever else. I mean, it would just be a huge help to us.
I don't know the rec person that, I mean, there specifically, but I would possibly contact Mick, the city manager. He's the one that we did the lease with.
Okay.
So he can, if he can't speak to you about the maintenance of it, he can at least direct you to the right person.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hopefully that helps.
Thank you. I appreciate you working with us, Julie.
Thank you.
Really, we appreciate that. Anything else? Any other public participa-, public participation? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks, folks.